All right, we're gonna get started. I apologize for us having a delayed start to our meetings today. We've been in session since five o'clock with some interviews for consulting services. So they ran a little bit over. So if we'll get started, welcome everybody to the Newton Town Council meeting of November 26, 2018. If everybody could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could do a vote call, please. Mr. Dixon?
Here.
Ms. Diglio?
Here.
Mr. Flynn?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Here.
Mayor Laquart? Here. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this regular meeting was given to the two newspapers of record and posted on the official bulletin board on January 8th, 2018. My colleagues on the council for consideration, you all received the regular meeting minutes from October 22nd, 2018 meeting. Any additions, deletions, amendments, changes, other considerations we made? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve. I will make a motion to approve the minutes of October 22nd, regular meeting.
I'll second the motion to approve the minutes.
All right, I have a motion by Councilman Diglio, a second by Councilman Dixon. A vote call, please. Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Ms. Diglio?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Laquart? Yes. At this point in the meeting, the town council welcomes comments from any member of the public on any topic. To facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit the opportunity for anyone who wishes to be heard, speakers are asked to take one turn at the microphone and please limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will keep time. If reading from a preferred statement, please provide a copy and email a copy to the clerk's office after making your comments so they can be properly reflected in the minutes. Do we have any comments from the public at this time?
Ralph Porter called. First thing I want to say, Saturday very well attended, very nice time, local, last couple years, but it was very good. Also, I commend the road department on their cleaning of the road on that somewhat supply storm we got that day. Now, I do have some issues, but at the same time, as everybody knows, I live by Popcorn Labs, Pine Street. We have two cars that were parked overnight during the snowstorm. I called the policeman in the morning to see why they were still there, and the officer came out. And instead of giving them tickets that had been told, they went to Popcorn Labs and asked them to move the cars. Now, I've lived on that street for, I've been there now since 1983. I don't know how many tickets I've gotten for parking overnight. How many tickets I got when I moved my car off the side, off the street in the snowstorm, got a ticket for parking on the sidewalk because I had no moving my driveway. Are we setting the precedent where they were gonna ask them to move their car every time and not care about the residents in the town? I don't understand this. My neighbor, he could not be here today because he has a child and his wife works at night and he put names ahead of the table. He had to shovel eight people's homes to get his car out. That's not acceptable in my book. I don't know if it's up to you, but it's up to me. Next thing, I walk everywhere. Everybody knows I walk, I can't drive anymore. I don't know how many sidewalks were plowed in by people plowing across the driveways and plowing them in instead of opening them up. Also, the foot lanes, by any port, they were closed up. It had quite all over the mountain. That's not right either. And the last thing is how wide, on your school removal ordinance, how wide is supposed to shovel? Is it one foot? Is it the whole sidewalk? I don't know. But people's walks, yes, is eighteen inches, where the cane is about four or five inches. That's twenty inches. Some of these people aren't shoveling one foot. That's not right either. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn.
It was my pleasure to have the congressman, Mr. Judge, correct? And he was so happy with all the ideas I threw his feet without, we said we can fix them if needed. And what shocked him and most of us was that my own priest from the wonderful church from St. Joseph, Moses one year, even the priest tells me, I spoke with Mr. Green and told him that our school, although it was closed two years ago, ran from pre-k through seventh grade, and it moves 154 students, that that building is still building even currently. And like I mentioned it to the congressman, I say, of course, consider that because if this was expensive, that they can provide transportation, you know, and we always gotta drag ourselves, especially to help all the way to Marion, you know, even fifteen minutes to say Joseph is the best already. And he said, he definitely said, I'll sit with Mr. Green and talk to him, but definitely by tomorrow. I have a copy here that you're gonna get. I'm gonna go to the whole Board of Education meeting that Mr. Congressman asked me to definitely mention it to them. He says, definitely go to that meeting because then that committee should be able to look at this whole issue and also make a better decision than all of us want in this community. So that's why I'm here. I have the whole copy to give to this wonderful people, and I pray that it comes through. But even the wonderful congressman agrees that this transportation by now should be taken care of and not be put so problematic. Now, with the mailman, God bless him, I think it's named Chomsky if I'm not mistaken? Yes, he says, yes, we do have problems with this delay in mailing, but definitely tell the congressman that, because I had, I told them two places that they can rent. I don't know, I mean, I don't know how your money look, but it's not so expensive. And he was nice enough to get information. I said, well, here's two places because there's no selling places that would be sold to me in the folks office, and that would also help with the mailing. So that was even better. But by tomorrow, I'm gonna give you a copy of what's gonna be given to the book. Okay? Hopefully you'll have the book on.
First of all, I'd like to thank the town, DPDW, for fixing my street light. It has been dark in our intersection from month to month. And it's great that they listen to me the last time I spoke. So now I see that you have the ordinance of induction for establishing the minimum and maximum salaries and wages, ordinance 2018-2013. So regarding this, the town manager and his salary, so as you consider it this year, please think about this. Okay? We have a town manager that makes almost as much as the governor in Jersey. The average town administrator's salary in this town is around $100,000 a year. So Mr. Russo holds responsibility for 2.5 square miles of town with a much smaller budget than the state, obviously. So it seems pretty ridiculous to some residents that his salary is so high. And adding to that, we actually provide him a vehicle as a county expense so he can commute about 30 miles. So I personally drive 30 miles to both of my jobs. And I have not once requested that my employer provide me with a car free charge. If I asked for that, I'd probably be left out or fired. I live in the real world. So it doesn't make sense to me and a lot of other residents. It seems like big budget politics, and it's not the main way. The school responsibility has gone from this place. There are families here struggling to pay for their electric bills and absorbent taxes and water installables, and they have to make do with what they have. So the salary for the town manager is really, it's more than many people in our town who make it three plus years part one. But this is not just about money. The town manager here holds a position of power and it has caused harm to the citizens here. He harassed me and my family, and he could do this to any of you. This is a position of trust, and he's not trustworthy. Sure, he's entitled to fight for the salary if he believes that he's entitled to. But if he truly believes that he deserves it, then I think maybe he should try to find it from another town. I say cut his salary in half, get rid of the car that we provide now, and hire somebody that we can afford financially and morally. He has too much power, and he wields it with impunity, especially when he remains unchecked by a rubber stamp council, which I'm sure that you guys will, you know, rail against with me. But I believe that, you know, you might secretly agree, but you won't say that. Anyway, that's all that I have. Thank you very much for listening.
Anything else?
This is Chris Anderson from 161 Mills Street. I want to just counter that. My experience, especially being a brand-new town person, has been the opposite, who have been very understanding of my plight. I don't see any of those things that were just described, and I know I maybe don't have the experience, but I just wanted to affirm all of you for everything you've done for my family.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we're gonna close that portion of the meeting. So next up on the agenda is a presentation. So if I could have Deb Danielson come up to the front. And I understand that Nathaniel's with us as well. Let's see you back there. Nathaniel, can you come up with Deb as well? So Nathaniel, I have to be honest with you, if we had called this a presentation to Nathaniel Sajak, he would not have attended. So we just put it as a presentation and had asked him to come. So please don't be mad at Debbie about that. But I want to make this presentation to Nathaniel, and prior to doing that, however, go over a couple of reasons why you are making a presentation to him. So Nathaniel has served for the last 17 years as a watershed coordinator and director of the Walk Hill River Watershed Management Group. And under the auspices of SCUMA, he has been serving the watersheds and communities of Sussex County. And Nathaniel and the Walk Hill River Watershed Management Group have been partnering with the town of Newton since 2014 and have been coordinating our community watershed restoration initiative, much of which I am sure the town, our town residents and businesses were not aware that were going on, right? And so this partnership has resulted in the successful development and completion of the following: stream debris clearing with NJDEP permits by rural authorization of the Mooresbrook, and that was in coordination with the Newton Road Department in the summer of 2014. He has coordinated the annual watershed cleanups in Memory Park dating back to 2014, and does that in conjunction with students from Halsted Middle School and Marion Avenue Elementary Schools. And since the fall of 2014, he has been working hard on our ongoing floodplain restoration tree planting efforts, has been working on those efforts over in Memory Park. And in partnership with the Newton Shade Tree Commission, Nathaniel continues to actively participate in our annual tree proclamations and dedications, and he also participates and assists when needed with vital information for grants and press releases and public dissemination of tree information related to specific geographical locations in our town. Our most recent notable ongoing project in the town is our rain garden, our beautiful rain garden located at Memory Park. And this project was done with student volunteers, the Newton DPW staff, Shade Tree Commission members, and Deputy Mayor Flynn and I had the opportunity to spend some time down there not too long ago to get an in-depth analysis and report of kind of what's been going on and meet some of the students who are so passionate about this club that they serve it in school and love to work with Mr. Nathaniel. And has been helping to coordinate a planting of a memory tree for Betsy Van Orden, who was a member of the Shade Tree Commission who passed away a few months ago, and Nathaniel was able to secure a tree to donate it to the town in her memory. And through all of these efforts, you know, Nathaniel's really kind of flown under the radar. He doesn't like to be recognized. This is very uncomfortable for him. I might squirt it out a few more minutes just because it's so uncomfortable for him. But he has also directly helped the town of Newton to foster partnerships and leverage funding resources for the use towards these projects from other partners, including the William Penn Foundation, the Nature Conservancy, New Jersey Audubon, the Rutgers Cooperative Extension Water Resources Program, New Jersey Future National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, as well as lots of businesses and organizations, Home Depot, so many organizations that you kind of go to on our behalf. And just as a side note, SCUMA, the Sussex County Utility, has also assisted with some of the programs in this development work through the Choose to Connect After-School Program, of which will be initiated in the fall at both Halsted and Marion schools. So they've expanded the project through all of Nathan's contributions and through his projects to offer a more robust environmental and tree program at both Halsted and Marion. And so Nathaniel, like I said, you wouldn't have come if we had said to you a plaque. But Debbie Danielson, I know you've been your partner in crime, and Deb, you have a plaque for Nathaniel that you'd like to read.
Yes. So the plaque states, "With the greatest appreciation, we hereby present Nathaniel Sajak, watershed director of SCUMA, Walk Hill Watershed Management Group, for your unwavering support and unrelenting guidance. That helped in leading our path to success with the ongoing floodplain reforestation efforts within Memory Park and Mooresbrook. You are hereby honored with much gratitude and appreciation, presented by the town of Newton and the Shade Tree Commission."
So Nathaniel, I'm gonna put you on the spot. Let's say a few words, but one of the things I didn't mention in here was the recent documentary that you helped put together about our projects, and so maybe you could just talk about that for a moment?
Sure. Obviously, I'm completely shocked. I did not expect this at all. I didn't see this coming even right up to the words of the presentation on the agenda. I am truly honored to be here to accept this award. Thank you very much. Thank you for thinking of me with this regard. I will say, you know, what my team and myself and the Sussex County MUA and the Walk Hill River Watershed Management truly value are the ability to work with our local communities, working with community partners, students, you know, municipal officials, and then the local businesses. That's what we truly aspire to do here in our watershed, because those are the tough, that's the way we make a difference, you know? When we get grant funds, when we get resources, it's leveraging with the local partners that allows us to make a project happen. And what we've been able to do here in the town of Newton, you know, working with the Department of Public Works, working some way, some way, Debbie, working with all of you from the town council, the Shade Tree Commission, and then most importantly, the residents and students. We've really put projects on the ground here in the town, in the Palm Scale Watershed, that are truly making a difference and getting a lot of attention and bringing a lot of good public awareness to watershed stewardship work here in Sussex County. We take great pride in that, but at the same time, we're also incredibly grateful and thankful for the local officials, the local partners that are willing to work with us. Because without that commitment, without the contribution of those resources, these projects won't go anywhere. I am incredibly proud of the fact that I've been the watershed coordinator and director for 18 years now here in Sussex County, and some of the work we've done here in Newton is the stuff I am most proud of. And it has become a model for other projects in the area. I have told other municipalities that the strongest projects can happen if you become good friends with the Department of Public Works, they're willing to work with you. So other municipalities are following that lead. And the rain garden that was done here in Memory Park is one of, we just visited it today, just to take a peek at it. And I will tell you right now that that rain garden, along with the one at McEwen School in Hampton, both of those served as a role model for the rain garden that we just built at the lake house at Culver Lake last month. And now we have another one planned for the spring at Crandon Lakes in Hampton, so it's a springboard effect. As far as the documentary, I was incredibly honored that New Jersey Future called and asked if they could help tell the story of the community partnerships that have happened here in the town of Newton, and how they evolved. And we had an opportunity to put together a little presentation. What was most important to me was to involve the local people that were involved in the project, including the students, including both of you, Mayor and Deputy Mayor, Debbie. Kent Hartmeyer came out from the Shade Tree Commission. I wanted to get as many of the local voices involved to help tell the story, because that's how the project happened. I wanted to get Rick on camera, but that wasn't gonna happen. So incredibly proud to be able to stand here, accept this, and say a few words. I'm embarrassed because I knew it was formal. I always wear a tie when I go out these four times. Debbie said, yeah, you won't have to come up tonight. But honestly, thank you very much for this. Has the video been able to be shown yet, or should we prepare that for a future effort? The small documentary?
We haven't seen it yet. I haven't seen it yet. You've seen it? Is it good? Okay.
So I'll be honest, it's awesome.
It's awesome? We will show it in the documentary.
So I think we should prepare a future meeting where we can explain it. And it can be posted on the town website as well.
Yeah.
I'm very, very happy with it because it does help tell the story of what's happened here in the town of Newton. Again, I am incredibly grateful for this. Thank you very much. But I do want to be incredibly thankful for everyone that's been involved in the work that we've done. And I know there's a lot more great work that's going to happen down the road because of people like Debbie and Adam that's sitting right here in front of me at the Shade Tree Commission and all of you on the council that have understood why we want to do this work, have taken a part in it, and are really understanding what we can do if we continue to work as community partners. That's really what I'm excited to see continue to happen here. So that being said, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thanks, Nathaniel.
Thank you very much.
All right, so move on to the next agenda item, and we have the utility advisory board appeal for 33 Mills Street. You want to?
Good evening. I was going to say this.
Please, have a seat.
And I'll submit a more formal submission so that the clerk can post it. You can sit right there. You're right there. You just don't have any time to answer. If I may approach?
Yes, absolutely. No, sorry. Thank you to the Shade Tree Commission for coming out. Appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Sullivan on the 2433 Mills Street, which is also known as Brookside Realty, large multi-family housing up on the hill. I have given numerous exhibits, and I just wanted to prepare a summary and wanted to state a summary on the record regarding our appeal, which was in fact denied back in June of 2018. I will submit a more formal submission if required by the council and municipal clerk. I will also see the attorney, Ms. Leo, who I've actually dealt with in the past, and was gracious enough to let me speak here tonight to discuss our reason for wanting the appeal to be overturned, the denial of the appeal to be overturned. So first, we have Exhibit A. So this quarterly water bill for the billing period from August 2017 to October 2017 was never received by Brookside Realty. The water bill was sent to a different address, and if you note on Exhibit A, it has as Brookside Realty Urban Renewal 691 Elizabeth Avenue, number two, in Newark, New Jersey, and it states that the zip code is 07101. That is in fact the incorrect billing zip code for 691 Elizabeth Avenue, which is Brookside Realty Urban Renewal's registered address. The correct zip code is 07112, which you will see on a later exhibit that was in fact corrected, which is Exhibit B. So Exhibit B, if you take a look, there's numerous issues. Stanley Hartstein is an accountant, one of the few, one of the many accountants that works for Brookside Realty Urban Renewal and Radiant Property Management, which is the management arm for Brookside Realty. It states 691 Elizabeth Avenue doesn't provide for a specific suite, which is in fact registered with the DCA as well as the municipality as unit number two. This is a multifamily dwelling with over 50 units, and there is also numerous office space, I believe, units number two, three, and four.
You're speaking about the property in Newark? It has multiple suites?
Yes. So it's addressed to an individual who is not known by the postmaster, doesn't provide a specific unit number, and so therefore it would not be delivered even with the correct zip code, which is here, 07112. So I wanted to make that note. Exhibit C provides for the correct billing information, and that is at 691 Elizabeth Avenue, number two, Newark, New Jersey, 07112. Brookside Realty Urban Renewal is one of the 15 entities that Radiant Property Management manages, and it's located at that address. It's both registered with the DCA as well as the municipality, which is in fact required. This is a correct billing address from May of 2018 to July of 2018. Due to the bill not being received, and that was for just that time period from August 2017 to October 2017, which was Exhibit A, Exhibit D shows that there were penalties due, which were assessed at $3,628.70. If you look at the top of Exhibit D, it has as alternate payer, once again, the incorrect Exhibit E is just email correspondence between Ms. Jackie Shackleton, who's the water sewer collector, and Stanley Hartstein, who is one of the accountants for Brookside Realty Exhibit F was the application, and Mr. Stanley Hartstein, before retaining my office, filed the application to appear before the Newton Utility Advisory Board. He did not appear, was not aware that he was able to appear, and therefore retained our firm to make this application here today to appeal the denial.
The owner was going to come?
Stanley Hartstein, who is the accountant, that is, one of the accounts, but he is in charge of Brookside Realty. As I stated, there's approximately 15 entities that are managed by Radiant Property Management. Exhibit G is the denial from Ms. Jackie Shackleton stating that on June 21st of 2000, or that there was a meeting on June 19th of 2018 where the appeal was denied. Kind of ambiguous in the reason that it was denied. It states, and you obviously can read it for yourself, but it states, "The board tries to apply the procedures outlined in the ordinance," which it doesn't state the ordinance, "to all accounts uniformly. Because you're responsible for payment, whether or not the bill is received, and because the bill has been successfully delivered many times regardless of the zip code discrepancy, the board has denied your request." Well, they're acknowledging in fact that there was a discrepancy, that even though they didn't receive it, they're supposed to assume that there is a bill and the amount of the bill, when clearly the records will show that my client, probably the largest taxpayer in the town of Newton, has paid his bills religiously, pays them on time, pays everything, the taxes, the water, the sewer on time. Exhibit H is a printout from Investors Bank showing the amount of $36,287 being paid for invoice for the water and sewer. for invoice for the water and sewer. Basically, what we're looking to do here is to, as a large taxpayer and as a timely taxpayer, a timely water and sewer bill payer, that the town of Newton, look at their past history, the three years that they have owned the property, their timely payments, and waive the late fee that has been assessed previously.
So, did the address that the town was sending the bill to change? Or have they been sending their bills to the same address this whole time?
Since they've owned it three years and they have had the same management office registered with the state of New Jersey, as well as this building is a subsidized building, so it's in compliance with all the federal regulations, and this is the only address they've had for the last 11 years.
But my question is, all of the sewer water utility bills have been going to the same address this whole time? It's never changed?
That's correct.
On the town side either? So then how were they paying their bills on time if this address has been wrong this entire time?
No, no. So, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
The address did change.
There was this one time period that it was, you had a discrepancy as a code. But if you take a look at the history, the payments before and the payments subsequent to this time period, have been paid timely.
You have a copy of the bill from before, right before, the one that has the proper address?
I can certainly provide that if that's required.
I'd be interested to see, yeah, that there was a proper address.
And I can show you cancel checks from every payment that has been made.
So you're talking about like second quarter of 2017?
Really, any of them that came before us to show, I'd like to see when, you know, the clerk layer changed, when that flip was made.
Was it the previous quarter? Previous quarter before the discrepancy?
Yeah, that would be fine.
What was the discrepancies? Is it just one?
Just that one period.
They send the zip codes changed on the mailing address just for that one quarter.
What's the total penalty, 36,287? I believe that's what it is. That's the penalty.
$3,628.70. That's correct.
Okay, Dan, to your point here, it says penalty age 25 is 3,628.70.
I know. I'm a little confused. So Exhibit C's penalty, there's a balance forward of 36,287?
That's the late penalty, the balance forward. And then they accrued because of their failure to pay it, there was a 10% those add on top of that. If you look at Exhibit C, penalty age 25, 2018, that's exactly 10% of the balance forward. So the penalty at this time would be $3,991 or $92?
But Exhibit D still shows a 36,287.
Yes. So Exhibit C is from September 25th, 2018, and Exhibit D is April 10th, 2018. Because once the appeal was denied, they took the penalty, and then they added an additional 10% penalty of the penalty on the next billing cycle, which was September 25th, 2018. I understand it's just one late assessment of the penalty. My client brought the fourth housing to the town as well as the county, approximately 220 units that they provide, and every single dollar does count, especially with an entity like this.
We have one location with 220 units?
Yes. So if what the council is asking for, I can certainly provide a subsequent submission showing the payment invoices as well as the payment history, if that's something that's of interest to the town.
I have a question because I'm reading a letter from June 21st, and it states that your past two balances $41,115.70, and the total balance is $77,622.70. Says if payment is not made by June 25th, additional penalties will occur. If they knew that money was due, and they were just questioning the penalty, why did they not pay the balance that was due and just deduct the penalty and put that into discussion?
Well, the amount that, because they were appealing it, and in order to preserve their rights as far as what was the exact amount, once this was given, that was what is provided. On June 21st, the letter went out, and if payment in full is not made by June 25th, I mean, the letter was sent June 21st. Once they found out the total amount, as you can see, June 26th, there were two payments, one for $36,287, and one for $37,707. So it was my understanding that they were waiting for the appeal. They're laypeople. They're not, you know, when they were to my firm, that was a different situation. I advised them that they need to stay timely with all payments and pay it in full, and then we'll just deal with the penalty itself. But they have been a time better.
But to Councilman D'Antonio's question, this letter indicates that there is a pass to balance, and by your own testimony, the penalties are accrued based on the outstanding balance, so that the additional accrued penalties would have been far less if they had paid the original bill, $41,115.70, less the fee, right, less the penalty?
Right.
And paid what was actually owed. Then while they were waiting for the hearings, the additional penalties that would have been accrued would have been accrued at a lower amount. Does that make sense?
It makes absolute sense. Unfortunately, I'm not the owner, I'm not the accountant, and I would have to be able to get more information. And I apologize that David, we're not present here.
But to Councilman D'Antonio's point, then we would be talking about a far less amount that would have been due either in penalty or that we would be deliberating tonight in terms of a potential refund?
Well, no, because the only penalty that had been assessed at this time is only the $3,600.
But you just also said that there was another 10% added, so it would have been $39.70 is what we're at now.
Right. But that's only based on the amount that we're here for tonight. That extra $362 is only based, is only on the amount that is in question, which is the $3,620.70. That extra added 10% is just on that, on the disputed amount. Every bill has been paid, is my understanding.
Correct, but you testified that the amount originally we were talking about was the 36,287, but then you just said another penalty has been assessed on age 25, 18 for 362, and so now we're up to $39 and change.
It's not an additional penalty. It's a late payment of the penalty. So it's not a different penalty. It's the same penalty. They're getting a late fee on top of a penalty fee.
How come you didn't provide the April statements? What happened in the April billing period? Is that the April billing period you're asking about? Because that's the one in between, like, that's the first quarter of 2017, which would have been due in the, somewhere around the end of April 2018, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Wanted to see and look at and fill in to check it out.
Then, I mean, then there's July, with the June payment, 2018, and here we are with the September. I feel like they're just missing like the, you started in 2017, because there's, you started at the end of 2017.
That's correct.
Well, we should have showed the bills that carried over just so I could see the accruing. Because we fast forward to the 20th, to September, and here we are at $39 and change.
In addition to that, Mr. Sobel, I'm sorry, go ahead and answer.
I don't believe I, so these exhibits were not submitted prior to tonight. I was only told that there was going to be.
Okay, so you just put it together on tonight, that's?
For tonight.
To make your case.
Absolutely.
Wait, so the utility board hasn't even seen these documents either?
No.
So they didn't have information that they needed to fully hear the appeal, correct? To make the decision?
When they made their decision, it was based on Exhibit F was made. And that was made by Stanley Hartstein as of April 10th of 2018.
I understand, just put this together tonight, but since we're basing our decision on these exhibits, from the start of the problem to where we are currently, there's two missing forms.
Yes, I'm captured. And then actually, I was gonna say, in reference to Exhibit H, I think you just said, so we have evidence that check ending in 765 for $36,287 was payable to the town, but I believe you also said that check 773 for $37,000 was payable, but we don't have that. You're just, that's just your testimony.
Right. That's my understanding.
So check 773 was payable to the town?
I believe so, yes. I believe that these were all payments that were made to the township of Newton. And then the one that is attached that's listed below, which is dated June 6th of 2018, is the one for the subject bill of the $36,287. The reason I didn't include any more exhibits is because these are the ones that illustrate the subject matter of the appeal. These are the only ones I believe are relevant, showing the discrepancy in address or zip code. And it's actually conceded to, in the decision letter of Exhibit G, stating that even though there was a discrepancy, a zip code discrepancy, that my client is to assume that there's a water bill that they should pay, that they need to pay it, and they didn't receive it. Once they received the total amount, that's indicated under the check 66, 2018, that payment was made in full, less the penalties.
So just to be clear, what the utility advisory board had was only Exhibit F in order to make their decision?
That's my understanding.
And in Exhibit F, your client lists the fact that there was a discrepancy in the zip code, and that they did not receive the bill. But they also written, they acknowledged that some sort of penalty is appropriate under the circumstances for not paying the bill. Right? Is that what that says?
Right. Yes, that's what it says.
So are you preparing to have your client to tell us what that number, that acceptable number is?
I would be very, do a bit against myself. You know, it's the 10% that they were asking to be mitigated on their original application.
What happened to the bill that had the wrong zip code, the 07101? Was that returned to town?
Yeah, I believe that was.
I see the letter that was sent to the, to, yeah, to Mr. Hartstein. But we're talking about a bill that had everything right except the zip code on it. There is no other address in Newark that matches the 07101. Typically, the post office would look at an address, and if everything matched other than the zip code for the same city, they would then, it would take a couple days, but they'd bounce it to the right one. So I just want to know if it was ever delivered or if it came back to us.
Yeah, and we don't have evidence given based on here that it was returned to us like we do for Exhibit B.
Well, we just don't know what happened to it. I just want to know.
I can't testify as to what happened, if they received a return sender, if the municipality did. You know, basically, we're just going off with the fact that if payment goes in the past.
Yeah, my only point is that typically, the post office will correct these issues and can do so fairly easily. And my only wonder is with the missing pieces of documentation, was it actually received maybe at a later time and then, you know, I just don't know. I'm trying to play devil's advocate.
On behalf of my client, they did not receive that bill.
Okay.
Newark, New Jersey is a little bit different. It's a town of 300,000 people, all multifamily.
But when there's only one address in the whole city that matches the zip code, right?
Well, there's a 691 Elizabeth Avenue in Elizabeth, New Jersey, which borders right against Newark.
Right.
I know for a fact, so there are.
But that's not Newark, New Jersey. I just have a wonder.
Oh, that? I don't even know who 07101 is.
It is Newark, it's just there's no Elizabeth Avenue or anything like that in the town, so.
On the other side of the city.
Yeah, so I just, yeah, we're definitely missing some pieces here that is at least kind of need for making.
Right, so Ursula, I'm going to ask you then, what are the options right now? Because what I'm hearing from our colleagues is that we have some incomplete information or we have some information that's being requested, additional information being requested.
Yeah, this is totally discretionary of the council as to what's being provided. And I think you're asking all the right questions. I think there's missing documentation as to what the address was prior to, and then what happened with the pieces. So I think your options are to make a decision tonight to allow them to provide more evidence. I think that's really, you can do that after you submit them, after you appear to provide those documents that are correctly asked and forced. Or if you feel like you can make a decision.
Or you can also have the town attorney to negotiate on behalf of the municipality to not prolong the issue and deal with the penalty and leave it at that.
Particularly because they're, you know, I feel bad for the utility advisory board because it doesn't appear that they had complete information as well. And if the only thing that they had to go on was Exhibit F, it is definitely not comprehensive. And they have also, his client has also said in here that they're willing to acknowledge some sort of penalties. So, you know, what's the council's temperature at this point?
If I may, can I just, I have respect for the request or ask that I be able to provide the additional documentation to the council through the clerk or through the town attorney, who I have been communicating with, so that I can provide you a more complete picture for you.
Do we really want to do that, or can we just like settle on like the greatest of my error on this part? We're not going to give up like the entire stake? Can we just do it now?
Well, that's why I asked Mr. Sobel.
He can't possibly know what they'd agree to pay.
That's why I asked Mr. Sobel.
If you can't agree on behalf of your client to pay less than the bill that's on there?
Of course I can.
Well, it's not your decision to make. It's your decision to make. So he doesn't have to agree. It's your decision to make.
If you come up with a number, I'll tell you that's what's being ordered by the town.
The total amount, if you're based on the two payments that were made to the town, the total amount is $3,628.70. That's just the penalty. And that's the amount due. No, that's the amount that's due because they made the two payments. And when we totaled the two payments and you deducted from the amount that was totaled, which was $77,622.70, you find that the balance is $3,628.70. That's the amount that's in question at present time.
Which is all penalty, not using?
Yeah, it was penalty. It was penalties.
I'll reiterate, rather than spend the money on Latty Clark and Ryan legal fees, you authorize the town attorney to negotiate on behalf of the municipality and one with myself, and we'll come up with something that's amicable to both sides. Otherwise, we will very easily eat the $3,000 in legal fees, and you will have wasted a lot of time and money. So we want to give Mr. Sobel a deadline to submit additional documents, and then we'll commence negotiations. Should have been ready tonight, but you want to give him a date certain. All right, end of business Friday. Submit it to Ursula, and I'll review it with her.
I'll submit it by way of email, if that's okay? Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
All right. So we're going to move on to the council and manager reports. So Tom, I hand this over to you. On October 29th, Councilwoman Dixon and I, along with the team from Caldwell &amp; Associates, attended the meeting. attended the New Jersey Association of Family Officials Great Reception New Jersey Awards. It was a great reception in South Orange, and this is the official award, the award to go on our walls here at the town of Newton. But just to remind everyone, the New Jersey chapter of the American Planning Association hereby designates Spring Street, town of Newton, Sussex County, New Jersey, as a great place in New Jersey, twenty-eighteen Great Street. And this, again, coming from the American Planning Association commemorates probably a decade of work in terms of master plan updates, transect zoning changes, the changes that we've made to types of businesses permitted within the Spring Street corridor and others. So it was great to be, not only at that event, but to be amongst some of the recipients, which also included downtown Cranford as the downtown public spaces, including Asbury Park, Harwood Rock. Another public space was the South River Park in Trenton. And for neighborhood, it was a historic, this historic Hamilton Park neighborhood, so congratulations. I know Jessica, there are pictures that are online and whatnot, but that's the program that came with it. So Councilwoman Dixon and I were happy to attend on behalf of the town. On October twenty-fourth, I attended the Sussex County Economic Development Partnership Symposium and Mayor's Reception. Two presentations of note that I wanted to share, and I know that we've had discussions earlier this evening, were about funding opportunities through the USDA and the North Jersey Transportation Planning Authority. And the USDA, USDA funding, which we may be eligible to apply for, will and can cover sewer improvements, the North Jersey Transportation Planning Authority municipal development grant projects include town centers, pedestrian traffic, transportation alternatives, signage, promoting tourism, technical assistance for grants, et cetera. So there was really some good information that came out of the New Jersey Business Action Center, as well as the Sussex County Economic Development Partnership on some possible funding opportunities for twenty nineteen that I'm hopeful we'll tell you and we can look into as well. On October thirty-first, Councilwoman Diglio and I and our town clerk, Ryan Reed, had the pleasure and honor of participating in the New York Department of Parks and the Moose Lodge's annual Halloween parade and trunk or treat. It was a fun night with lots of little, little kids and big kids participating. Adults, we added a couple of categories this year, including seniors and pets, et cetera. So it was fun. And some really creative trunk or treat cars. I don't know what other to say, but just like really creative that, that I hadn't seen done before, so that was fun. Deputy Mayor Flynn, Councilwoman Diglio and I attended on November first Sussex County Community College Foundation's funding their future event. Well-attended, about a hundred eighty people. The intent was, is to raise money for scholarships for students at SCCC. Lots of people who's who from around the county, so it was nice to have a presence there and talk individually and collectively as a group about what was going on in the town of Newton, and certainly hear from the college about what's going on there. Councilwoman Diglio, Councilwoman Schlafer, Councilwoman Dixon and I participated in Coffee with a Cup on November eighth. It was nice to see many of our police officers, detectives, leadership out there, talking with some folks just about what's going on in Newton. Again, as a reminder, these are all part of community policing events that are proactive way to get out and have the public interact with the police in a very positive atmosphere and to talk about really any issue that they want to talk about. I think we covered the gamut of many, many issues. And so thank you for partnering, partnering with the council and inviting us to participate with the old Chief Richards and Matt Gardner. On November tenth, I attended the Newton Medical Center Festival of Lights event. I want to thank the Newton Fire Department for being there and being on call. In the event of emergency, want to thank the police department for crowd control and traffic control as well. And certainly, I believe this is twenty-sixth year that Newton Medical Center has put on a festival of lights, fundraiser and community event. Lots and lots and lots of people there with kids participating in Echo Ramada Community Center and kids events, and Santa was there, and it was just a great kind of community building event. Many of us were down at the New Jersey League of Municipalities Conference in Atlantic City, November thirteenth to the fifteenth. I'll leave some of the sharing to some of the other council members, but some of the sessions I attended, including how the, how the levers of power in Trenton affect your municipal agenda, how to kind of look through some of the issues that are happening in Trenton that affect municipal government and as the county seat, many of the items that they talked about were quite timely. I also attended sessions on the marijuana legalization conversation and the sessions addressed state and local perspectives and what is going to be happening over the next couple of months. I attended a session talking about resources available to municipalities fighting opioid epidemic and, you know, I've, I believe, I've said this before, Councilwoman Diglio can certainly attest to this, Lieutenant meetings and certainly Chief Richards as well, Newton remains in the forefront of what's going on in the state in terms of fighting opioid epidemic as well as really being a resource to other municipalities, police departments, not only in town, but throughout the state, of what's been happening with the Clear Program and, and those collaborations. And then I went to a session about optimizing economic developments in the municipalities. Speaking of the Center for Prevention and Counseling, I attended their screening of Beautiful Boy at the Newton Theater on November twentieth. I know on nineteen, they probably had, I think, they said about a hundred or so people. Tuesday's group was smaller, but, you know, Newton Theater partnered with the center. Becky Carlson was able to make some comments to everyone who attended prior to. They were in the lobby handing out information about the Clear Program. And if you haven't seen that, it's based on a true story. As a matter of fact, when they showed the screening, Becky Carlson said she was, I think it was Fox Pictures maybe reached out to them and said that they had heard that they were having the screening in the town of Newton. They were trying to get the father, the author of the book that the movie is based on, out to Newton for one of those two evenings, couldn't make it, but they're hopeful that he might be here within the next couple of weeks, which then they will let us know. And then we're doing, looking, talking to our groups about, about that experience of family dynamic and, and kind of what that means about. If you haven't seen it, you gotta see it. We'll leave it at that. Of course, this weekend, thank you to the Brooklyn Newton Chamber of Commerce, wonderful holiday parade, Wizard Con, DPW Police, the other police departments that came in to provide backup and support, cleaning up the street. It was a cold day, the weather wasn't great, but I've already talked to many people about the action in there. Councilwoman Diglio and I were out with the DPW guys addressing the water main break on November sixteen. So again, thank you to our guys. You may recall the fifteenth was the snow get in, had hit the street, and our guys have gotten off the street at about eleven AM, the water main break happened at two, and we finished up at about eleven-thirty, I think, that night. So our guys were kind of really out more and longer than twenty-four hours. So thank you to, to the department for that. And then I just want to make a point for those of you that may have not received it, received it, received it or seen it. The November twentieth newsletter from TransOptions actually featured Newton and our Streets Smart Campaign results. And back on, yeah, they talked about the results and the results getting better and certainly Chief Richards this year, but on September thirteenth, TransOptions had their annual recognition breakfast. Now, the metal would have ran off, and there were lots of presentations and lots of people from State Department of Transportation there, but the town of Newton was recognized at the gold level for New Jersey's smart workplaces, recognizing New Jersey's finest employers. And then also with regards to the Safe for Arts to School, TransOptions program, Marion Avenue School was awarded the bronze level award as a two thousand eighteen Safe for Arts to School champion. So, there has been a lot going on. I know others have, have others, a lot of other things to say as well, but it's been a busy and good time for sure over the last couple of weeks in and around the town. And lots of good publicity that I think, again, we want to continue and try to do a better job of sharing information, which is why we provide the time at the Council meeting to do that. So that's all I have up here.
Well, that was quite comprehensive. In an effort to, to save some time, we have a still full agenda. I really have nothing to add to that. At this point in time, I will say, I would like to thank the Department of Public Works, the Police Department for their efforts this past weekend, the parade committee, the Councilwoman Diglio for all the effort that went into the parade. It appeared to be a success, the Wizards event afterwards. You know, I, I heard mixed reviews, but overall, I think, I think it went off without a hitch. It was just unfortunate with the weather, after the league of municipalities. Helen and myself got caught in the snowstorm on the way back, as well as probably half the state. So we were pretty much right to move back. Were able to radio down to some of our police officers that were still there and told them to just stay put, which was a wise decision. Because they left, they left in the morning and made it only three hours instead of thirteen, or not at all, so that's all I have to add.
Councilwoman Diglio?
I pretty much got it as all, so we were at a lot of the functions together. As far as the parade goes, I do want to thank all the DPW workers and the police. They did an exceptional job with helping me as far as setting up, controlling the staging area and getting the parade out on, right on time. Thank you very much for all the work that you do to help us with this event.
Also, in mind of the conservation of time, parade was awesome, thank you, as usual. It's always a great time, any of our parades here in town. I did get a chance to go to Wizard Con, and while attendance was lower than expected, it was a really truly great effort by the merchants and vendors. There were so many free and clever activities for kids and adults. And, and I just hope to see that same effort and fervor go forward next year and into more of our events. It would be nice to see, you know, events from the merchants tagged onto all of our holidays and any, any parade or celebration we do in town. Because I tell you, if, if they approach other holidays and events with that, that kind of creativity and motivation, Newton will become a hub of entertainment for this quiet rural county, and I'm pretty excited to see how that turns out. So I really hope the merchants try again next year and we see some of those mistakes corrected.
Councilwoman Dixon?
All right, I'll try to keep this somewhat short. On October twenty-fifth, I, along with other elected officials from municipalities in Sussex County, took part in a meeting with Senator Ojo, Assemblyman Works, and Assemblyman Space. Updates were given on the status of legalizing marijuana, the bond question on the ballot, general contributions, the Vegetation Response Act, and pathway to progress. Since our last correspondence from the senator's office, I was asked how things were on with the boarding homes. Have we noticed any improvements? They're still pushing the legislation if need be. I'll provide them with an update. So, it's just, I know that they, they said that they installed some cameras in common areas and there were some addictions that were done and whatnot. I was just hoping, Tom, they would get an update as far as police activity and property issues and whatnot, since maybe we met in August and passed that information along. I want to congratulate the members of the Board of Ed who were elected, and I just wanted to give a little recognition to John Jackson, who was not re-elected. I want to thank him for his years of dedicated service to the residents and students of Newton. He was an asset to the board and his contributions will be missed. November thirteenth, I attended the quarterly Clear Meeting. I don't want to take too much of Chief Richards's thunder, but just talk about the number of narcanations overdoses in the past few years. A lot of talk about volunteerism, a lot of opportunities within the Clear Program. You can go on the website and see what you can do. It varies from recovery coaching to, you know, just helping out at the center. They're always looking for donations for stuff, too. So all that information can be found on the Clear website. Just an effort to continue to get that out there, because that's going to be the big driving force. Not really to just wish the problem away. We got to get the word out there that the program exists. The Board of Ed meeting, full day preschool is going to start January second. Dan, I know you expressed an interest in the Weekend Bag Program and the high school student that just made a presentation at the Board of Ed. She was asking for support and donations from the community. Also, it's going to be recognized by Congressman Gottheimer for her efforts. On November fifteenth, I attended the STEM Academy Open House at Newton High School. Mr. Hoffman, Mr. Bennington are doing fantastic things with that program. It was, I was absolutely blown away. The students are articulate and passionate about the program. I was impressed with them, to say the least. Our students have afforded incredible opportunities that will be valuable in life going forward. Newton High School has a lot to be proud for, not just for their athletic accomplishments, but the modern academic opportunities and accomplishments being made. Councilwoman Diglio, I just wanted to thank you and everybody involved with the parade. I thought it was fantastic. A lot of people came out in a cold morning, and it's great to see that because it's a wonderful tradition here in Newton, so.
Thank you. Mr. Russell?
Yeah, just, I want to, I know he's left, but I want to congratulate Nathaniel. I had made the recommendation to Deb Danielson to do something for Nathaniel for all his hard work. He's really been a great champion for the town, so it was nice to see him recognized. Kind of an unsung hero for what he does for us. I'd like to thank the chamber for the parade and all the staff and volunteers who participated in Wizard Con. Smaller turnout than anticipated, but those that did attend had a lot of fun and hopefully if it continues, we can build upon it. And last but not least, the tree lighting, don't forget that. That's coming up. That's on a Friday this year, Friday, December seventh at five PM here at the Town Hall, so please add that to your calendar. That's it.
Okay. What I did mention, and thank you for reminding me, Jim Hoffman, who is a teacher at the high school, he and the students got together with Home Depot, Home Depot, donated all of the material to build Sandy's house. And I just want to make a pledge of, Jim Hoffman and the students did that for, for the county to the same, but they really built Sandy's house. What do we have now for every other? We just have to story.
According to their lifting house, we'll move on to ordinances. We have the second meeting and public hearing on ordinance twenty-eighteen dash twenty, in ordinance amending Newton Town Code Section one hundred dash nineteen regarding water and sewer permitting fees. Do I have a motion to open the hearing to the public?
Make a motion to open, sorry. I'll make a motion to open the meeting in public.
I'll second that motion. I have a motion by Councilwoman Dixon and the second by Councilwoman Diglio that we move to the public. Seeing no one, I'll make, I'll make the motion to close.
I'll make a motion to close.
I'll second that motion.
A motion by Deputy Mayor Flynn, the second by Councilwoman Schlafer, to close the hearing to the public. Do I have a motion to act?
I'll make a motion to pass on ordinance twenty-eighteen dash twenty.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Diglio to act on ordinance twenty-eighteen dash twenty, or the second by Deputy Mayor Flynn. We'll call vote, please.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
No, none of us started.
Mr. Schlafer?
Yes.
Mayor McLaughlin?
All right, yes. Okay. We have ordinance twenty-eighteen dash twenty-one and ordinance amending Section three twenty-eight dash two point C, permitted uses of the Newton Town Code to existing senior family detached and duplex residential as a permitted use in S T three zone. Do I have a motion to open the hearing to the public?
So moved.
I will second that motion.
I have a motion by Deputy Mayor Flynn, a second by Councilwoman Diglio, or favor?
All right.
Anyone from the public here to speak?
Hi, we're becoming more and more capable and more aware. We really want to show you how much we appreciate the effort you put in to correct something that I think nobody knew about until it happened when I made the decision to take the legal action. I know it took a few months before we didn't, I didn't know how it might have been, it might have happened, but I think we all know that from P S S all the way to the, the end of Newton. That's not a new thing, and never will be, I think, a lot of analysis or, so. We're glad to see that we're able to do it tonight and thank everybody for your effort today. That was considered important.
Thank you. Any other comments in the public? Okay?
Seeing no more comments, I'll make a motion to close that portion of the hearing.
Seeing no more comments, I'll make a motion to close that portion of the hearing.
I'll second that motion. I have a motion by Deputy Mayor Flynn, a second by Councilwoman Diglio, close. Do I have a motion to act?
I'll make a motion to act on ordinance 2018-21.
I'll second the motion to act.
I have a motion to act on ordinance 2018-21 by Councilwoman Dixon, a second by Councilwoman Schlepper. We'll call vote please.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Flapper?
Yes.
Mayor LeBlanc?
Yes. All right, we have two ordinances for introduction. Ordinance 2018-22, an ordinance amending the code of the town of Newton, Section 307-53, Schedule 4-B, regarding parking in municipal parking lots. Do I have a motion to introduce?
I will make a motion to introduce ordinance 2018-21.
I have a motion to introduce by Councilwoman Schlepper, a second by Deputy Mayor Flynn. We'll call vote please.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Flapper?
Yes.
Mayor LeBlanc?
Yes.
The second ordinance for introduction is 2018-23, an ordinance to establish minimum maximum salaries and wages for officers and employees of the town of Newton for the following year 2019. Do I have a motion to introduce?
I'll make a motion to introduce 2018-23.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion to introduce by Councilwoman Schlepper, a second by Councilwoman Dixon. We'll call vote please.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Flapper?
Yes.
Mayor LeBlanc?
Yes.
Now that that's introduced, could we get a highlight on the, did you know the differences, the changes?
Yeah, I can give that to you for the, for the adoption.
Okay. Like highlight the, the comments?
All right, we have no old business at this time, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be rooted in uncontroversial by the town council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless consent on or so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Tom, go through those items, please.
Sure. 208 is a refund of taxes for 18 Duma. 209 is the annual appointment of myself for statewide insurance as the fund commissioner. 210, excuse me, is concurrents with my appointment of special police officers. 211 is authorizing disposal of surplus property on good deals. 212 is the annual execution of the agreement between the town of Newton and the parking authority. Resolution 213 is authorizing the updated employment agreement with Michael Richard as police chief. Resolution 214 cancels appropriation balances in water sewer. 215, 16, and 17 are all renewals for taxi cab owners or driver licenses. 218 is a refund. 219 is another refund. 220 is an authorized redemption for plain field Ave. 221 is a payoff for Joe Sappio, who's retiring from the town. We wish him well in his retirement and thank him for his service. 222 and 223 are renewals of the fund balance policies, which we implemented a few years ago. 224 is the approval of appropriation transfers from Dawn. 225 bills and vouchers, and then we have one application for the fire department.
Okay. Do any of the councilmembers have anything for the session?
My question about the contract, was it done by ordinance, the chief, was it done by ordinance last time or resolution?
Resolution. Yeah, I just updated the existing resolution.
Any other questions or more discussion? All right, so now do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second to approve the consent, or a motion to approve the consent agenda by Councilwoman Schlepper, a second by Councilwoman Dixon. We'll call vote please.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes, but I have conclusion check number 40856.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Flapper?
Yes.
Mayor LeBlanc?
Yes.
We'll go for the intermission.
Yeah, I'll just need an intermission between Dawn and John Cherry to set up the presentation, so we can keep going.
Yes, of course, okay. So at this point, we will move into our first item of discussion. We have a police department presentation by Chief Richards. As a reminder, the council since July, or actually I was saying previous to that, has wanted different departments to come in and give an update on what's going on in the town. And if I remember correctly, it's the police department.
I'm sorry, if I plug in up there, it'll go to the speech.
If you email it to me, I have to pull it up on here. You have to, or flash drive it. Mayor, before the mic begins, I want to thank him for his service and I want to thank, you know, thank him for his service, but I appreciate you all agreeing to re-up his contract. He's been a great police chief and really a great leader for the department. And I'm very grateful that he's agreed to stay on for a few more years before he's ready to move on to other things. So Mike, I'm grateful you're still here and appreciate your hard work.
Thank you.
I, likewise for you.
He's polite, too.
Even with the mustache.
I figured it was another mustache.
Yeah, I know. Yeah.
I did it two years ago, and it's over too long. Saturday started out well, I had one of the guys say I looked like Burt Reynolds. And then a little bit later, somebody said I looked like Freddie Mercury.
Wow. Dropped from there.
Chief, are you going that over to?
Younger.
Flash drive?
Okay.
Kind of Dawn walks through best practices, it's a little less exciting. Father Chief. Yeah, she's, you know what I mean? Yeah, let Dawn go on. Yeah, let Dawn go on.
Actually, I just, where did it say, an article? Oh, there was something, yeah, there was an article today on the city politics about all of this and the impact to municipalities. So, John Backcock, I was here to update us on best practices, global financial certification, parking authority, et cetera, so go on.
Okay. The best news is, again, the town qualifies for 58, they will qualify for 100% of state aid. As you know, this policy was instituted several years ago by the state to try to reach out to towns and have them incorporate different practices into their budgeting, personnel, all these areas. So Newton has received 100% of their state aid every year. So that just speaks well of management council, about our policies. We do implement the policies and we have been effective there.
So Dawn, if may, so for the public's information, the state requires a town to abide by the state's version of best practices. And depending on the administration, the best practices checklist may change from year to year. So you don't always know, you don't always know what we're going to get judged on, so to speak. And so we get the best practices checklist, and then we basically have to certify or prove that we have either met all of those different components or have policies and procedures in place in terms of our management structure that we're meeting those best practices, right? And the benefit to the towns for doing that is then you either get a portion of or your full amount of state aid, depending on how you score. So we've scored well, again, thereby being eligible to receive our entire state aid amount, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
And actually, this practice only comes out like about a month ago, and they give you like two or three weeks to do it. So it's very, it's interesting.
And from what I understand, Governor Murphy's was very different than Governor Christie's.
They're professing that there's going to be a change. This year's inventory has an expanded policy focus, while continuing to emphasize statutory compliance and corporate competencies. So again, part of it is they're actually trying to survey towns to see, to get a feedback, which is good. My, my recommendation on that is don't put it into something tied into a report card. You know, do a separate survey. But having said that, how many of us have done the survey? There wasn't the little dollar at the end to entice us to do it. So I can see where they're going. What I did do is answer to the council, anything that we didn't get answered, no to. Some of those are able to go over, I can either go over them individually or you have those. I did want to address the parking authority budget, because one of the best practice questionnaires, about three quarters of the way down, says question 26 and 27. And I answered that the parking authority 2019 budget was introduced by the parking authority on November 5th of this year and submitted to Division of Local Government Services. It will be approved on December 6th. During the preparation of that budget, revenues and expenses were analyzed, cash flow and net position at a term unique to the parking authority were analyzed. The recent ordinance resolution, the policies were discussed, it determined the effectiveness. So 2018 revenue collections looked very good in reviewing them. Again, we should try to do a conservative approach, and so our revenues will exceed what we have. And that definitely happened. This should help increase the net, the net position of the authority. So in looking at that, basically, one of the questions they want you to ask is, is the continuity of the GPT as an authority versus, you know, using a machine to current project? And we feel that keeping it separate as an authority is a benefit to the town. This way, the revenues coming in are matched with expenditures out for the same purpose. And that's the idea of an authority. Part of the questionnaire, it asks you to enter yourself finding a conclusion in the budget, which are, the revenue will do for us and will, and will be good there. So did anybody have any questions on the parking authority budget?
No, I think I agree that keeping them separate allows us to look at revenues received, and that helps us every so often when we do an assessment of parking and the costs of parking. And it also allows us to, as women, to make expenditures, keep them separate.
Yeah, it's been a benefit. And then I think question 41 asks, the state came out with a lawful final notice allowing us to use electronic funds transfer technology. Presently, right now, you have a bill listed in front of you, and you can see that we issue manual, we issue checks that get produced off the system. We also have a section for manual checks. If you went to this next technology, you'd have a third section of electronic fees checks. And I think one of the biggest, I mean, about four or five items that are concerned with. The biggest one is that if you're storing some information or checking the account information, then there's, you have to really save that information. So my feeling is, we'll see how this pans out with other towns. Let's get feedback from them and proceed, reevaluate it next year if we want.
And this is separate from then, our customers being able to pay their bills on that basis, for our vendors to, for us to pay electronically.
So do you want to set them up in the system, you know yourself, people change their banking account, they never tell you. I don't really see there's savings time or money at this current time.
Well, to most people, this sounds like it's kind of old technology, but we're making the distinction here that this is new technology the state set up that municipalities are thinking about doing it, so we want to kind of take a literacy position, right, on that technology? Okay.
I mean, presently, we use wires for debt service, we, you know, utilize things like that for the school payment. But, you know, it's a bit down the road.
Well, for taking in like water and sewer and tax payments?
We do those, that's what we, our vendors.
Place for vendors.
That's what I was thinking then.
Yeah, we use the old school voucher technique, right? They're like handwritten checks.
Purchase orders we use for, Cumber funds, yeah, we have to do that.
So at this point in time, and I've had that discussion with Jenny, the treasurer, and Sean Candy, our qualified purchasing agent in town, and then we've all kind of interacted back and forth. And we're just going to revisit it next year, see, see if there's anything more positive from it. Yeah. Did anybody have any other questions on the best practice? I like them to have a hundred.
I still want, I have a little question. If you got a hundred, it's hard to question a lot better.
Well, we didn't get a hundred, but we was going 100% state aid.
Yeah, yeah, right, right. Blood, I mean, that would just, too many of them is up.
You need that before this is around 58. Good.
Good, not bad.
Any other questions for Dawn?
Thanks, Dawn.
Thank you.
Chief? Thank you.
Chief, sir.
He's an IT official, too. That works good. So Tom has some handouts there. So I realize that the meeting's run a little long, so I'll try to limit it to an hour.
Good, thanks. Oops.
First slide is, I saw a lot about tonight, you know, what people have changed on. What was the goal? And, you know, you got our monthly reports, you got our annual report, which goes into a lot of detail about the stuff that we do. So I thought that tonight, I would, I really wanted to focus on some of the why. You get a lot of the what that we do, and I want to focus a little bit more on the why. And I also wanted to focus on our guys and girls. Both are, all of our officers, we have 22 regular full-time officers, including myself. We have four full-time public safety fellow communicators. We have special officers, one full-time and two part-time. And we also have a number of part-time dispatchers, one full-time administrative assistant, and one part-time clerical reference clerk. So they're all represented there in that organizational chart. And it kind of stems from there, Tom, if you can answer that. I just, I'd like to, if you can fill with that, is it filling? Okay, so part of what we go into is the history of the department since 1910, when we were established. There's Sergeant Rollins at the time, he's now, you know, retired chief. But we've been in schools for a long time and engaging in the community. So there's, I like to try to emphasize the tradition of the Newton Police Department. You can kind of go through these, but these are some of the department photos from over here. And the emphasis that I want to make is on not only our history, but on the fact that we're in the community and we're engaging the community and we're continually evolving. We're, that's a code of the cop event there. And it's so important that we focus also on the officers, because they're, they're the guys who are problem solvers. They're the ones that are the fault of our resources or going towards, right? So we need to continue, I think sometimes remind ourselves that we're not replaced by computers and technology, those things can be force multipliers. We need to continue to invest in them. And those are some of the things I want to talk about, how we, how we do that. The torch run, we do that, link to people from the high school, the kids and educators there. Not even lunch program, which is new, new in New Jersey. We're the first in Sussex County to bring that here. And we just have some other photos of some of our officers who are out of town. Because that's, that's what makes, makes the department have the respect and the reputation that it does have. There's the two Zappas, first gen, next gen. And I know it's not. So getting to a little bit of the why. So it's easy to, you know, what we practice is what I consider evidence-based policing or is outcomes-based. And there's a basic definition there of what that consists of. But for me, there's more traditional sort of policing where you, you count everything and, and, you know, your successful police department is one that may raise a lot of tickets, or we arrest a lot of people, or things like that. And it's, I look at things, I want to measure outcomes by having less car accidents. I think that's a better way to measure things. It's more difficult, because sometimes if you don't have anything, you wonder, is it because we did something different? Or, you know? Or, you know, so there's, it's a little bit more difficult to measure, but I think that's how we have to continue to look at things and analyze problems and collaborate with other people or organizations. We work together with other agencies, there are law enforcement agencies, but also, you know, on multiple levels of government, but also other places such as the Center for Prevention Council. Those types of collaborations and taking a look at ways to think outside the box and direct our officers in that way, I think are much more effective. So that's, that's an outcomes-based model. And two, there's things that we can't control, right? Like, sometimes the crime rate goes down, you know, like, we're looking at the crime rate today, it's like two thousand sixteen numbers, you know, that type of thing. So we're much more hands-on. We know when something's bubbling up, like, almost immediately, so we're looking for, you know, the FBI to produce the issue. So, and there's, you know, just demographics can change, which can affect crime rates, but the things that we're in control over are our officers, how we manage them and lead them, and the department's initiatives and programs. So that's the stuff that I want to talk about. Our officers, again, are most valuable resource, they carry out our mission. I believe that the role of the police department is to be problem solvers, and we have to give those officers the ability to make good judgments. And so doing, you know, providing training, both as supervisors as well as ongoing in-service training. So some of the examples of the things that we do, number one is, we are very diligent in who we hire. These are, these are thirty-year commitments now, right? You hire a police officer, that's thirty years. You make a bad decision there, that's, that's something that's gonna haunt you. So as a civil service town, that makes it actually sometimes more difficult for us, because you can't necessarily test a very wide net, so to speak, of people. You do have to be very selective and to work through the list. That's very important. And then, once we have them, we've done a number of things with training, both online, we hired a group called the Rogers Group, which is providing us in-service training that also provides proficiency affirmation measures afterwards. So they get delivered a message that sort of oftentimes requires in-service training, and then they have to show that they know that information. And these are all best practices. We additionally send people to specialization schools, everything from things like active shooters to how to be a good supervisor. We've had a number of our officers complete the West Point Commander Leadership Program. I don't think they're allowed to call it West Point anymore, because it was West Point when I went through it. I guess the folks, the general of West Point, I think, got upset at some point, but it is based on military leadership, that's why it's called that, and it's, there was police chiefs from New Jersey who went to West Point, their leadership program in West Point, and took their concepts and gave it into a leadership program for New Jersey police officers. We also do a lot of things that might fall less in the leadership category and more in the management category, because you can't have one without the other. So as, as a department, we also have to have good policies, so we put a lot of effort into making sure that our policies are in line with best practices, and we also do a lot of work inspecting our officers so that we get what we're expecting, right? So we were the first department in Sussex County to have body worn cameras assigned to every officer, and randomly we review them to make sure that they're, and regularly review them, as well as the dash cameras, to make sure that their officers are doing what they're supposed to do, and that there's not any areas of training that may need to be addressed. And a lot of times, I mean, that's not the purpose for the cameras, the purpose is for evidence collection, right? So if you are on scene for something, you will have a, sometimes you have an excited utterance, you may find evidence, you can have a use of force situation, these are all great things for the purpose of body worn cameras. We've had a number of complaints against personnel that are clearly no fault in the officer, whereas in the past, without that recording, we would have been kind of put in a category of unsubstantiated, because you can't tell what's happening, so it's almost like a he said, she said situation. So body worn cameras have been very helpful in that regard. We have a number of other things in place, like our CAD and our mess system, we recently updated that, actually, no cost to town, because we're doing this information sharing. We're hosting the server here, our provider, our vendors, or enforcers, and they're going to, we're hosting information that will be shared, all the other police departments also have enforcers in the county, will be able to all seize others' information, so facilitate improved communication and information sharing between the police departments. But with that, we actually also have internal affairs that will be built into that, which will also include a random urine tests, which are now required through the Attorney General's Office. So that's all things that we're working on right now. Then through some grant funding, we've been able to provide some additional technology and helpful things, such as new barricades, no cost to taxpayers, a new protective vest rifle, that will take a rifle round, they're very heavy, thick, so in the event of an active shooter, right now, some, believe it or not, some officers may even realize this, when we had an active shooter on Madison Street going back a few years, that he was shooting an AK-47. And officers, at first, they realized that that rifle round would go through the front of their vest and out the back of their pocket, through the other panel, because they don't protect against rifle rounds. So we now have, in each car, we have rifle plates that they put on in the case of that situation. So in addition, I think I was talking about collaboration, we have, through the County Police Chiefs Association, we just purchased a firearms training simulation system. So it's going to be portable, and all the police departments throughout the county will be able to share this very expensive piece of equipment, so that while we go and shoot our guns, what seems to always be lacking is training for judgment and making judgment calls. So we'll be able to put officers through different various scenarios where they exercise training for judgment in use of force situations. So there's, there's a lot of very important things that we're doing with our officers to make us a better police department. Additionally, so that was officers programs, we continue to try to work on strategies with an outcomes-based approach. So everything from community policing things that engage our community better, such as our crime tips, texted tip, one of those things, like, I talk about the CLEAR program sometimes, and people are like, what's the CLEAR program? Well, you also heard about our texted tip in our crime reports, and it seems like, I tell a lot of people that are not familiar with it, and it's like, you can see everything that's going on unless it's a confidential investigation, it's updated every night to a server, and it's put on a map. So if you wondered what was happening down the street when there was some police activity, then tomorrow, just go online, and you'll find out the basics. And then if you, if you actually have information about it, you can submit a tip. So all these types of things encourages kind of like two-way communication. I mentioned the CLEAR program, certainly, that's something near and dear to my heart. Sussex County has a drug demand problem. We don't have a drug supply problem, per se, we have an annual report there that we distribute. The fact is, is probably three-quarters or more of the arrests in Sussex County are for possession. So we can target drug dealers, and certainly we do, but that's not going to solve the problem as much as we can do with something like the CLEAR program, which will help reduce the demand. So when we have less people that are drug addicted, and we can help them into recovery, that overall helps the entire community. So some of the things that we do, we're, I'm part of a mental health task force in the county, where our aim right now, we just started, is through, is being directed by the County Prosecutor's Office, we're training, we want to at least train twenty percent of the county's police force in crisis intervention team training. I attended the training, I'm now a certified CIT member, and I have, I think, two or three officers going the second week of December, and a few more guys going, and J and M to additional training for that. So we're definitely going to have more than twenty percent of our department as trained for crisis intervention, which will be very, very helpful in helping use of force incidents, and it will improve officer safety, and it's helped us a lot dealing with people that are in the service, and we have a lot of vulnerable people like that here in the town that serve. So, and I think part of this, part of the idea of having programs like this is, you know, whether it's lead or not at once, or just meeting with various organizations. My detectives and I met recently with the folks at DIFIS, ECP, and anybody else, so we're meeting with them to review their security procedures, we're doing that with the churches, we're doing it all the time with Project Self-Sufficiency. All over the town, there's a lot, you know, moving matters aside, there's a lot of organizations like that that we meet regularly to try to help them manage their risk and reduce their risk. Sussex County Community College is another example of that. So when we have these programs, Coffee with the Cop and so forth, what it does is, it also helps set the tone for our newer officers, so they know what kind of police department we are, that that's where our focus is. So it's kind of a combination of putting our officers' direction, giving them support, but also kind of holding them accountable as well. Our website, very proud of our website, and while it's awesome, what makes it kind of extra awesome is that one of our patrolmen, Dan Finkel, actually created and maintains it. So it's a wealth of information, and I don't want to take a lot of your time to go through that, but there's, there's a ton of information on there and other resources that the department provides, whether it's child safety seeds or what have you. The CLEAR program, I did a presentation recently, and I played that, and I'm like, I'm wearing the same exact shirt while I'm with that. So if you have a minute, if you think it's okay, there's a three-minute, if you click on that, Tom, I should bring you to a YouTube video. We were recently, there was a documentary by NJTV, or Police Department, or Police Officer, is multifaceted, that's one of the departments. The role is, is to protect people, and sometimes only those protect you from yourself, and when you're hurting yourself by using drugs. We have already here, and we have the, the Sussex County CLEAR program, which stands for the Community Law Enforcement Protection Recovery Program. It is a capping-wide effort here in Sussex County, that allows people to commit to their arrest or prosecution, and to take their company's second place in the courts, and target any drug-related behavior, and we will connect them with a community coach to give them a lot of help if they're struggling with protection.
What I mean, someone that has come in through the CLEAR program, I introduce myself, I introduce myself as a person in recovery, somebody that understands what they're going through. Most of the people that are coming in, who lack a lot of resources, many of them don't have a driver's license, they don't have a car, they don't have a lot of family support, and they don't have health insurance, and some of them don't have a place to live. So they're coming in because they don't know where else to turn, and we're walking them through the whole process of getting used to treatment center, and then helping them build up their resources for recovery.
In Sussex County, all the authorities additionally not disturbing, it's the homeless person who all get to be loved, it's, you know, fathers and mothers, brothers and sisters, sons and daughters, you know, very individual people. So the recovery process that CLEAR allows for these people is, you know, an important aspect for defeating, you know, drug epidemic overdoses has been a problem that we have collectively in law enforcement that we're trying to battle, and this seems to be the thing that really has the most traction, and it's been very meaningful to me personally, as well as a lot of the police chiefs throughout Sussex County, that we're finally able to have something that seems to be making a difference, and we're not just going out and continuing to either arrest people or, or, or the, or the war, or, you know, body that we picked up. So we're a part of generally...
As a person living with addiction, I used to fear law enforcement, and now to see that police officers genuinely want to help the community and offer help to people who have an addiction problem, it's just been amazing to me. It's amazing to work with law enforcement, they're here twenty-four seven, so they're done to open their doors and say, walk in, we're here to help you. It's, it's just a partnership that has been really rewarding. So just this week, I was in the waiting room of our office, and I saw one of our particular participants, who was at our one-year anniversary last year, and he just continues with his active career, and he's doing well, and, you know, when he was here, he talked about, you know, before he talked about having a job at Kansas County, you know, I hope in the future.
Thanks for letting me play that. So we recently issued this annual report, got a lot of great information in it, and this is the first time the data has been produced and released for Sussex County for municipalities to really see where they stand in comparison to other municipalities. And it really demonstrates that it's pervasive, but also, I think, I'm a data person, so I like to know on a county-wide basis where we need to probably be focusing our resources, and definitely the town of Illinois is one of those areas. And I think part of what we've been able to see since the CLEAR program has been in effect is that our deaths have gone down in the town, and I think that's attributable to both our new and our can use, as well as the many, many people that we've helped through the program. So it's a, it's a good thing. To continue in line with that type of outreach, we have Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram, we're putting out press releases on newsworthy things frequently, Lieutenant House Board is a public information officer, and we look as much as possible to engage, to be responsive and proactive, and we certainly appreciate the support from the town council, our town manager, as well as many of the other departments, from local departments to code enforcement that we deal with regularly, and certainly, we're also, we take our responsibilities very seriously, and we look forward to any feedback or any ideas that we can leave to the public. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You too.
Questions? For the chief?
For Chief?
Any questions?
Not particularly about the presentation, but we have two officers retiring in the coming year.
At least, two have submitted their applications.
Yeah, two are in the process, yeah.
Yes, one, at least one other is probably anticipated, has stated so. There's another three or so that are eligible. I don't know who the one I'm calling.
No.
You just don't get to generalize that. So, what are we doing about that?
We are doing background investigations right now. It's an undertaking. And if it's possible, what I'd like to, what I'd like to try to do is if we could get one person in the academy in January, and we could possibly get a transfer, if that works out. And there's a lot of stars that have to, you know, cross at the same time to make that possible. But if that is a viable option, I'd like to try to get a transfer in that would, you know, be one.
One-on-one transfer.
Yeah, and then we're probably going to be revisiting that for the fall class, if additional people retire. So, right now, because, you know, it's, you know, it really becomes difficult to manage overtime costs. See, we're getting back into the left, but it's, you know, that's my plan. If we can have, if we can have one that we can put in the academy class, and then maybe February or so is when the first officer's going to leave, we can get a transfer in by then.
So, I'm trying to do. So, Chief Richards, a couple of things, and I shared this with you, but certainly we'll talk about it. But the reputation of the new police department is fantastic. And I've told you this, being down in West County and places farther south, being in the last week, and you mentioned a fund that had moved into their law enforcement, they know about the good things that are happening here. The quality of the department personnel from top to bottom, the training, how up-to-date everybody is on trends and what's going on, and certainly the leadership, under your leadership, the leadership that the police department has taken in the county, in so many of the programs that you've talked about, I mean, we talked about CLEAR, we talked about LEAD, we talked about Coffee with a Cop, Coffee with a Cop, you know, Smart Streets, all those things that are out of the realm of what I think some people would consider as regular policing. You know, all those other add-ons, in addition to the jobs that you do each and every day, are important, and they cause a ripple effect amongst the community. And, you know, for so many people, their interaction with the police department is not necessarily a positive one, right? But our ability to be our community and community policing, you know, as I shop on Spring Street, our sleuths that are up there, they're engaging, they know the business owners, they are interacting with the people that are walking on the street. It's a positive presence, as opposed to, let me, it might behave you properly because there's, you know, there are police on the street.
Well, a little bit of that.
Yeah. Whether it's on bike patrol or in the cars, or, you know, whatever case may be. I think our department comes from a position of community partner, as opposed to being, coming from a position of enforcement and trying to, you know, be the heavy in the town, catching people doing something wrong, right? So, I think that's a much better way of policing, as opposed to, you know, the opposite of, the only time I interact with the police is because there's an issue or a problem, or I need to file a report. So, you know, we continue to be supportive of the department because of all of that, all of the things that you guys are doing, and also trying to keep it with the understanding, the budget constraints and being respectful of the taxpayers' dollar, and trying to do more with less, as everyone, as everyone continues to try to do that. Now that we're going to come up to budgeting season, and, you know, part of the responsibility is making sure that we have a great law enforcement, that you guys have the resources that you need, and that our taxpayers, our business owners feel protected, right? Those are the things that are important, are my schools good, are my streets safe, are emergency personnel going to respond when I call them and I need them, right? Those are kind of the core, important things to everybody that's in town. So, thank you for your continued leadership the next couple of years, as Mayor Flynn said in the memorial is tonight. But really, to the entire team, and I want you to take that back to the team, our thanks and appreciation for the job that you all are doing twenty-four seven, in addition to the other things we enjoy above and beyond the minimum requirements that are the positions you all have, so.
Thank you.
Anything else for Chief Richards? Thanks very much.
Thanks, Chief.
John Sherry, you are about to do the presentations.
Okay, please, try to be quick.
All right, so our final presentation tonight is an update from our surgeon here about the Water Avenue Pump Station.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks for having me here tonight. I'm here with one of my colleagues, Tony Gaglioestro. I'm going to give you, the council, an overview of a preliminary design, a basis of design for the Sparkit Avenue Pump Station replacement project. So, John, next slide, and then I'll turn it over to Tony. So, the purpose of the preliminary design was to look at two alternatives for the existing pumping station that's part of Tri-State Men's Building. The facility, as you can see, is rather old, originally constructed in the nineteen fifties, and has reached the end of its useful life. So, we looked at two options. The first alternative was to replace the existing facility with a new facility, entirely new facility. The second alternative was working with the existing structure to modify it extensively, to see if that made sense, be a significant difference in implementation and cost. So, it's running, I'll turn it over to you for a few minutes.
So, I'll be going through and describing some of the existing conditions, and then highlight some of the work that we did in sizing and evaluating the preliminary design criteria for the station. Here we have listed the four main goals for the preliminary design and the pump station replacements. Of course, we're going to have to improve the reliability as we renew the facility. We're going to be providing new structures, new equipment, to making sure that we extend the life of this facility. It's one of the oldest vertical assets in sewer system, as Johnny mentioned, it was built in the nineteen fifties originally. It underwent a major retrofit to repurpose the existing structures in the nineteen eighties for, to get, to get more out of the existing, the existing facility. And, but that kind of brought along some constraints that are, that are creating some, some problems with operations. And that leads me to probably the most important of the goals, and that is the improved safety. There is, in the current configuration, you have an operating floor that is exposed to, you know, the open sewer pool, what we call wet well. And that, all of the operations are done on that platform area, so they're raking out some, some rags and other type of stuff. They're doing maintenance on grinders and pump equipment down in the wet well. Otherwise, you have to hoist a bunch of equipment up and through. And we have a couple of slides to demonstrate that. Quickly, the third and fourth goals is to, you know, plan for future capacity issues. And we've done a build-out to make sure that we have the pump sized for future development and redevelopment. And as I mentioned, is the maintenance issues. With the current configuration, there's some areas that, you know, collect solids, and the operators are forced to clean up, you know, and remove it so that they could get the most flow through the channels there. So, next slide, please. This is a layout of the original facility from the nineteen fifty. And what I wanted to highlight here is, I'm not sure if you could see it, but you have a solid wall originally that separated the wet well area, which is where the pool of sewage was, and the dry well area, which is the location of the equipment. Originally, there was two pumps. You had, you know, a sharp stairway that came down to the operating level of where the pumps and the valves were. But this was completely separated from the actual pool of sewage. Going to the next slide. You see, what they did to get more flow back in the nineteen eighties was they opened up, they cut an opening in that solid wall. They placed a commonuter and a flow channel through here, and they added a pump. So, now you have three pumps, but the entire, this is a section view of the station. You see that this is your operating platform in all the operations, like you're going to be working on your grinder that, and on the, on the bar screens, all within that wet well area. And it's hard to get Pinterest to justify it, but it's a very congested situation. You have a lot of ductwork, you have a lot of pipes and valves, all within, like, as you walk down the steps, you're pretty much walking onto the lower pool of the sewage. I mean, there's platforms and everything, but it's all exposed to that area. So, it's, it's not the most, we're going to do something similar like that nowadays. So, it's one of the reasons why we're looking to have these preliminary designs for complete replacements. Here's a diagram of the town, as well as highlighting the drainage area for the Sparkit Avenue Pump Station. And you can see that almost half of the town is served by the pump station. So, it's a critical asset, it's, you know, it also is serving some of the highlighting, highlighted areas for redevelopment. So, having a facility that's going to, going to serve the town well for the next fifty, fifty years is definitely a major benefit. And as part of our preliminary design, we broke down the scope of work into three tasks. We have some data collection as the first task, we performed a survey of the area. We, the existing station does not have a flow meter, so we needed to get some flow information so that we could properly size the pumps, and so we could start laying out what the facilities would look like. Under task two, we also performed a geotechnical boring to confirm a couple of key conditions, which we'll go over next. And the third task was to, to, once you have the station sized, laid out a couple of options for alternates one and two, and performed a cost analysis, as well as a cost-benefit evaluation. Task one had the flow metering installations. Given the configuration of the influencers, we had to put two flow meters in. So, we had them in for about five weeks, and we were able to obtain sufficient flow data, including a major storm event, to kind of give an indication of what the inflow, infiltration entering the pump station is. As I said, highlight that, you know, based on that flow information, we saw a wide range of inflow flows. The peaking factor is four point five. It's an indication of what your average flow is compared to your maximum, you know, maximum observed. So, the pump facilities have to be able to handle that range. This is the flow information shown graphically. You see that we have the yellow line representing the average flow for the period that we monitored, and the green line is an indication of what that max observed flow was. As part of the flow analysis, we did a build-out calculation to estimate what the, what the future flows. Because the flow meter gave us the existing flows, we had to project out to get an estimate of what the, what the build-out and what the final pump station sizings would need to be. This incorporates all of the redevelopment as part of the Sussex County master plan and wastewater management plan. Next slide, please. This is just the summary of the flow data. See that on our average day, the pump station sees about point four MGD, the gallons per day, but your maximum flow rate jumps up to around one point seven. Given that flow information, we started to lay out and size an arrangement of the pumps. The New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection regulations require a certain rate of capacity based on one pump out of service. And to cover the wide range of flows, we determined that it would be best to have two pumps, two smaller pumps and two larger pumps. The smaller pumps would be handling the day-to-day flows, and then you would have that large pump to be able to help to handle the peak, the peak flow rates. But you need to have a redundant big pump to meet the New Jersey DP regulations for rate of capacity. The soil boring was performed, we confirmed some key information based on the depth of bedrock, which we found to be around thirty, thirty feet below grade, but also the presence of groundwater at around four feet below grade. This is going to have significant considerations in costing of the construction of the facilities, so for the de-watering facilities, and also some ripping of bedrock for the new wet well construction. So, with that information, we continued on with the evaluation of alternatives, and John will go over that.
Thanks, John. So, as I mentioned earlier, we looked at two options. One was to build a new pumping station next, on the same site, but without interrupting operation of the existing facility. And it's a little hard to see, but there's the existing building, and these are mostly below-ground structures. But the idea is to take the inflamed sewers, run it into a grinder chamber, a separate pre-cast chamber, and that macerates any solids and sewage. But we construct a sewer at sufficient slope to make sure the solids move. Right now, one of the big operational issues is the slope is very flat, and it requires staff to go in there a couple times a week with shovels and buckets to remove the debris, detritus that accumulates in the flow channels. There's no way to change that. Then it flows into a wet well, as Tony mentioned that, we have four pumps, and that's a deep structure. It'll be a pre-cast structure, but it's probably thirty feet below grade. From there, it goes into a valve chamber, and then a flow meter. Next to it, there would be a small control building, and actually, when we met, we got some feedback from staff. We had shown a standby generator, which is also required, standby power is required by state regulations. That would probably be combined into that small building, which would be a pre-cast concrete building. Next slide. This option is to modify what's there with some extension, extensive. This option is to modify what's there with some extensive changes. We would still need to put in a grinder chamber, modify the existing building, knock down the superstructure, and make a lot of revisions inside. We'd still have a valve chamber, a flow meter chamber, a generator, and a control building. So with the data we collected and the boring information, we felt costs based on our experiences, bid prices, and other construction data, and the costs are very close. So we did a qualitative analysis of the two as well. We think we have improved, we know we could have achieved improved safety with a new facility. We'd have better hydraulic conditions to prevent the accumulation of solids. And what will be sized optimally for the town's future flow requirements. To construct it, to construct a new facility without interrupting operation of the existing one, whereas if we were to modify the existing facility, there would be an extended period of bypass pumping around that facility, which is very expensive, but provides no benefit or new asset to the town. It's also risky. So this is just, these are some photos of kind of what's envisioned. This is actually a new facility over in Rockaway, Boone. It just started up a few months ago, but it's a pre-cast building. You can see the pre-cast structures and the generator to the side. This facility is actually a little bit larger from a capacity standpoint, but it's very similar in concept and layout. So what are the financing options? The town can bond and finance it locally. And I was talking with Dawn a little bit about that. You can issue a grant and bond it yourself. But we're also looking at USDA Rural Development Program. The mayor mentioned, she recently attended a program on that. They offer not to exceed 25% grants. Typically, it's around 20% if you're doing well. It's a 40-year loan, so you're paying debt service for 40 years. There's the New Jersey IBank, which is also known as the Environmental Research Trust, formerly known as that. They offer 20- or 30-year low-interest loans. They're uniquely tailored towards water and sewer facilities. Typically, you would get half-market-rate interest on those. So we've received amortization schedules from both of those funding programs. They're being reviewed by the staff right now. The next steps, if it was decided to move forward in that manner or a traditional manner, would be to submit an eligibility determination to USDA or a letter of commitment to the IBank. What kind of permits are necessary? We would need general freshwater weapons permits, which is good rather than individual permit. We're going to confirm that. If we are outside of the repairing zone to the local stream, however, we need to confirm whether a flood hazard area permit would be required because the stream is not eliminated in that area. A treatment works approval permit is a permit to construct. It's a very straightforward permit. And then if one of those financing options are entertained, then there's an additional environmental review that would be required. Next slide. This is an overall project schedule. I'm projecting it's probably about a year and 10 months or about to carry out the project from the start until finish because there's a design period. And about midpoint through the design period, then we submit your permits to the state. The state needs at least three months to review and issue permits. And then we would bid the project, and then you're talking about a year and constructing. And you've got a winter in there, so you need to consider that. This is a realistic view of what the overall project schedule would be if the town decides to move the project forward. So what are our recommendations? Based on the fact that the cost analysis is very close between the two options, we recommend a new facility be constructed. It will certainly provide a facility that lasts over 50 years to the town and be designed to today's standards rather than try to change something that really will never meet today's standards. Consider your financing options. And then once that's decided, if it's decided to move forward with the project, begin the detailed design process, bid and construct the project. And while all that's going on, continue to maintain the existing facility as necessary. And at that point, if you have to answer any questions.
So Mr. Sherry, the number one question potentially of everybody sitting in the room is, why do we have to do this? And if we don't do anything, then what happens?
The existing facility is a drain on resources and is going to require some investment. Could you do less of an investment than this? It's possible, but you have the continued high degree of operator retention and also the associated safety issues with the existing facility. I think safety is a primary consideration for this. To eliminate the confined space and create a facility that does not require a confined space entry for routine operations is a main driver.
And I know that you referenced in the financing options, the USDA financing options. But what about, I did not see in there a suggestion to look at the Rural Business Development Grant Program?
That's the same program.
But that's not, it's not, I mean, it's actual grant money as opposed to purely financing the entire project?
I may have missed, but it is, it's the USDA Rural Development Grant Program that I'm referring to.
Okay. Because the presentation, I want you, they specifically said that they'll do sewer product improvements and that they have more money than applications.
Yes.
Is that what they said?
We've got three or four going on right now with USDA Rural Development. You have to qualify, and the town does qualify because of the population. One of the main criteria is a population less than 10,000 people. So it's not available down below. You know, I don't, below, it's kind of hinted at that one. So it's a very good program.
So Joe Henry is our local contact? Do you know of him?
No.
Beverly?
Beverly B.
Beverly B.
Bailey, Bailey. Beverly Bailey's the guy.
I mean, I have Joe's contact information. Dawn, if you would like to take this, or take a copy of this, because he specifically is interested in talking to Sussex County municipalities. And like I said, his quote was that they have money to give away and more money than applications.
I guess the program that's on is solidly crossing. It's the same program.
Any other questions, Mr. Sherry?
The current, the current plant has a generator outside, right? All of them new?
Yes, it's indoors in existing offstation.
Oh, indoors. It's amazing how much such a little, you know, such a little footprint costs. And I know there's so much, there's so much to it because it must, the logistics of constructing it must be very difficult because you've got to keep the other plant in constant service.
As a measure, we do have access to cost curves. So we look at that too. And if you look at that flow and the cost curves across the nation, you know, it's right, right in there.
Pump stations are high.
They are expensive. It's heavy construction. It's tight construction. The groundwater has to be dealt with, so tight sheeting's going to be required. And there will be some rocky excavation at the wet well as well.
I think I'm good. I appreciate the presentation, both of you did a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Here, John, let me give you this back.
And we do have a second, second public, depending on your questions.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks. Okay, another discussion? Okay. So let's move on to the next open to the public. Anybody who's here to speak, please hold a minute for now.
Tom Porter, Bob Fine, you again. I do want to, I was just hearing it. We've had several opportunities to speak to you lately, and you've been very positive. We've had several vehicles here operated by Duncan Allen in the wet well, but he's worked for us, worked for us, and he's been there. And he's been working on that one, and they were very helpful. Mr. Verthaus helped us out with, folks, Verthaus helped us out with the carbon issue on, actually by Furlad. They're very helpful there, too. And we're looking, I've also opened folks for Lorraine on Spring Tunes, very helpful with everybody up there. And we have our car, our grandson now, so we had officer, I think, or our partner, he's always right, did excellent job. I was hoping I would hear something from Tom or somebody about the ordinance on shoveling this snow. And so I didn't know if he answered that, so I'm glad to get the answer. What is the proper width? And who's white fall? Am I supposed to fall or is, right, because it comes from that look at it? That's one time I would hope I would hear. And then, but last thing, I have a question for you, so I, I'd get into that. You were asking after that, is it going to be a star? Or is that going to be a little bit of labor? Thank you.
I got a question for you. How long are you referring to the sidewalks being unshovelled in these specific areas? Days?
Well, right now, the front of the, over by the, well, yeah, the front of the, the country, ten, ten hundred Dalian in the McFlair store? Five days when it's shovelled by the, on the sidewalk. There's still a block of snow coming to the, coming to the parking lot. And spend that like for five years. Over by Mary's shoe factory, going that, you know, again, by Mary's shoe factory to the Dunkin' Bell. That's a block of snow. And that's been going on for a few years. I, it's not, you know, it's one year thing. I've been coming here for five years complaining.
I'm just trying to gauge, like, habitual.
Habitual people over and over again. I could, I could name, I could write my law for you if you want. But I don't, it's my job to go out open for everybody, either. I feel the walk through, with that, and go around it. And fall over, I fell in my own yard. I had, I surgery a few weeks ago. I fell in my own yard, and I have to go back for surgery again, on my shoulder. And I don't want to be falling elsewhere, you know?
What is it, 24 hours, 40 minutes?
Twelve hours after.
Twelve hours, yes, it's two minutes.
But the width is a fundamental, we've got two halves wide, you know?
I would imagine it's probably closer than the sidewalk, but.
I think they are eight, they're, that's four feet wide.
Right.
I don't know, the on-story street, no. I've noticed this many times, and it stands out tonight, that many elaborations, called that of the resolutions, many of them have the amounts, the costs that are incurred by the resolution itself. Tonight, I see there's one exception. And that happens to be a 35-year contract with two persons that we have a renegotiation, because it has come up. And yet there is no severance for this director. Why is that?
It's in, it's in his employment agreement.
That doesn't tell the public what he's getting.
Understood. You can do an Oprah request, and the clerk's office could fulfill that, correct, Ursula? Okay, so you can do that.
Why would I have to do that? And why are you not putting, yeah, let me put it that way. Why are you not putting?
Because it's in the employment agreement. It's not something you would typically find in a resolution.
Why don't you?
It's the correct answer. I've always been very fair with you, Mr. Malone. I've always been very fair with you, Mr. Malone. The information is in the employment agreement. It provides the terms and conditions of his employment. If you would like a copy, we can do an Oprah request through the clerk's office, and you can have it tomorrow.
But given that to me, it's not what the public, no.
But tonight's resolution is authorizing the employment agreement. It's not the employment agreement itself. The employment agreement can be provided as it says.
So what you're saying is if anybody wants to know, they can apply.
No, we'll consider this your Oprah request. It'll be fulfilled tomorrow, correct, Lorraine? Right, we can fulfill it tomorrow. We have a copy. Thank you.
All right. Doesn't cover my topic, but I look on, I'm trying to, thank you.
Any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, we will close that portion with additional council, council, council administrator comments. On Friday, we have, sorry much, Sean.
Thank you.
On Friday, we have the official ribbon-cutting ceremony for the Old Style Shop on Capitol Hill Building. It's at 2:00 PM on Friday. I know a call today. I wonder who is attending.
I still have more discussions, so nothing yet.
If anybody else is attending.
Tell them.
Good. Two o'clock on Friday, the 30th.
It's most likely to be jury duty, so. But I don't know that I could tell on these.
How do you have jury duty?
Yeah, I've got.
You know, like to the official.
As far as I know, it's gonna, no, you're just telling me the, the official. I did have a lot of, I don't know, I'm just.
But.
Jury duty.
Usually jurors one through 16, you know?
No, you're, you're.
I don't know, I know. I put it in the official papers. So hopefully I'll call tomorrow and they'll say, no, you didn't. Otherwise, I'll be there.
Okay. And you're working. Definitely, any other additional comments?
I have nothing, nothing else this time. Yeah, Steve Sweeney's coming this week.
Yes, it's the longest, Steve Sweeney, 11:00 AM, Spalding School Building.
Who can attend? You are? Yeah.
My deal's the same, I can go with that.
It's 11:00 AM, right?
Yeah, 11:00 AM.
And that's, that's mine. Okay. Anything else, Councilor? How many there covers up for now? The Councilor's offer. Mr. Russo?
Yeah, I'll work with Ursula on an update on the boarding houses. I'll have code enforcement reach out to Mr. Porter, and I'll make sure Lorraine fulfills the Oprah tomorrow for Mr. Muller.
Thank you very much. We do have an executive session tonight, Resolution 226-2018. A resolution for the Department of Environmental Protection to be issued under the Environmental Act. NJSA 10,000, 4,12 personal, private, internal, and general review. So we will ask everyone else to leave at this time. And thank you.
I'll second it before you do it.
I have a motion by Deputy Mayor Lynn, a second by Councilman Schlapfer to go into executive session at 2:03. Y'all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.